Tell me who you are.
Van Thompson.
Van Thompson. Nice to meet you.
I'm Jane Conrad.
Jane Conrad.
Yeah, she runs things.
Well, I'm the keeper. I'm one of five. I have no more power than anyone else. So I just talk in our town. Brandon Lefebvre in the town.
You know Vivian? Alfred? And Allison? Gil Lefebvre?
So now I started.
Really? Yeah.
What was your name again?
Jay, J A Y, Copper Swain.
Copper Swain. Okay.
Yeah, it's nice. I liked it.
He's my great grandfather's brother. And I think he's my second cousin twice removed. Yeah.
Well, it's nice to know.
Yeah. We're related to George Copper Swain, New Jersey.
Well, we're from New Jersey, but I don't know George. But George.
John Mait, he was a chemist.
He's saying that.
Well, Alex.
I can't remember. All right, all right.
Wendy Carr. A C A R. Ohio. Nice to meet you.
What you heard.
In Tenet Harbor. Yeah. Yeah, I've been in your house. Rabbits in smoking jackets. Wallpaper. Rabbits in smoking jackets. You did in your kitchen years ago.
Still, right?
Andy Willie.
I need you.
Tired already. This is the town. This is the town. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. They've been there all winter.
Well, maybe they've left.
I see them. They kick things out of it. Rubs and stuff and bugs.
Give another half an hour.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that other place that wanted us to do is identify somebody that we're not going to do it. That's the same organization. I know, but do you remember the name? It's like volunteer, volunteers, I don't know, America.
The actual volunteers.
Okay. Now, the one that, the original one. I know. The same line. You can imagine. I watched the YouTube. Oh, no. Exactly. You spoke a lot and I was kind of like, I actually, yes. Yes. And this side of it, they were like right up against the camera. And I thought like, I'm never sitting down there.
Oh, right here.
Down with the. Oh, it's right here. Because there's one thing that like, it's like right where you're.
Well, everyone, glad you're all here. Well, start with the Pledge of Allegiance. There's something. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Thank you. And I'm Jane Conrad. I'm Chair of the Select Board. And as you know, we're here for people to share their views on several issues that are going to be on the ballot in a few weeks. There is a sign-in sheet that's going around. Judy, who's our stenographer, transcriber, secretary, would appreciate your signing. So if you speak, she would like to spell your name correctly. And if you do choose to speak, if you could say who you are when you stand up or start talking, that would be helpful. And the, the issues we're talking about tonight all involve either property that's owned currently by the residents of the town or property that the town is considering accepting for donation from the St. George Youth and Scouting Organization. And we will hear a presentation during the second half of the public hearing from the Parks and Rec Department about how they would use that property if we vote in May to accept that. But we'll do the first half of the public hearing about the Historical Society leases. And I think most of you probably know from the Historical Society that the Select Board has worked with them to come up with terms that would be agreeable so that there wouldn't be competing leases on the ballot. And so the goal here is for different perspectives to be shared. Obviously, we can't, there isn't time for everybody to talk. So hopefully, I'll recognize as many people as wish to speak. And let's start with the lighthouse property. Nat, do you want to? I can't see you. If you want to talk about the lighthouse and the lease and why you're here tonight.
Okay. Those of you may not know, I'm Nat Long. I'm the Chair of the Marshall Point, like, that's a museum. We have affected with the town a two 10-year leases. Because that's what we had before this whole issue about having leases, having to come to the town for a town vote. That's what we had before, and that's what I accomplished again. I think you're all pretty much lighthouse and what we do. The one thing I would like to point out on behalf of the Historical Society, of which we are a member of, that between them and Marshall Point, we're pretty much the custodians of the history of this town. And we're doing everything we can to preserve it and to make it open to all the people to enjoy. And I just want you to remember that between the volunteers at Marshall Point and the volunteers for the Historical Society, that's what we're doing. We're here to keep the history of this town for you, your children, to be able to enjoy. At one of the hearings, I was asked, what does the lighthouse give for the town? Under our lease, we are responsible for most of the repairs to the lighthouse. So since 2011, we have spent $317,000 in repairs and additions to the lighthouse. And I just, we'll go quickly through it. We're still in the midst of repairing the gutters, the old wooden gutters. We discovered a lot of wooden rot underneath there. And what I thought was going to be maybe a $20,000 project. We stopped at this side of $30,000 and we still have some work to do. So we've got $29,650 into the gathering plan. The January storm damages, our participation was $830. We refurbished in 2024 seven of museum windows because the Historical Society in Augusta said that they had too much historical significance. So we had to refurbish them instead of replacing them with energy, more inefficient windows. So that was 12, 6. Spray the parking lot to 1,600, paint the walkway and the porch to 5,400. Replace six benches with composites, 6,000. Paint the interior of the museum, 11,000. New shop display cabinet, 3,500. Generator, 12,000. Wi-Fi expansion into the barn and into the, into the shop, 700. The water system had to have a new pressure tank that was 400. The apartment upstairs was painted, that was refurbished, that was 5,000. New water system head was 500. I can go on and on and on. I just want to give you an idea of what we do with the money that we take in from the shop donations. It all goes back into the property. The only people that get paid is our bookkeeper and the gal who cleans the museum in the summer. Those I say, when you add the, the new barn, that was 140,000. And I will just kind of give you a little hint that we're hopeful that the walkway may get repaired this summer. However, we don't know whether the FEMA funds are going to be available. So we will have to go out on capital fundraising campaign. And right now, FEMA estimate to repair the walkway was $90,000. So $300,000 I'm talking to you now could go boop. So that's what we're all about. If anybody's got any questions, I'd be glad to answer. If any of my compatriots here would like to support what we're doing.
Well, first, at first, well, if people have any questions for Nat, and then, then we'll listen to supporting comments. Because I would like you to be able to answer any questions people have about the lighthouse operations or the lease. Yes, Ann.
I'm Ann Stone. I have three questions. Why is this voted at the town meeting?
Why is it being voted on?
Why do we not do this at the town meeting rather than the select?
The, the Select Board has the option of doing things on the town meeting or at the ballot, according to our lawyer. And the discussion at the meeting where we had, when we made that decision, was that more people have a chance to participate. You know, more people tend to come to the polls than come to the town meeting.
Tonight's not a vote. It's just a public hearing so that folks can ask questions to get more informed. The vote, you'll vote on it at the same time that you vote for Select Board members, School Board members.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand if that was your question. Right. Yeah, we're not voting on anything tonight.
So my second question is, is there a capital fund going at the lighthouse in particular?
That, that's a question for Nat about whether they have a capital campaign to raise money.
No, no.
Oh, no.
Capital campaign. When you have a budget, when you have income in your working, which we know you do at the lighthouse, you set some apart, some of that money apart for capital improvement?
Correct. We have a capital improvement fund because we schedule our maintenance on a yearly basis. So in order to get the gutters taken care of, the big expenditure this summer, other than the walkway, it's time to repaint the keeper's house. So we have a capital reserve fund for such big maintenance item. Because we haven't got a billion yet, but I'm thinking it's going to be just shy of $40,000 to repaint the keeper's house. So we do have scheduled maintenance. We do know that when we can get to the tower, that's going to be, have to be repainted. We did the lead abatement a while back. So, yes, we're fortunate to have enough to be able to take care of that without coming to the town or anybody else.
So you take a part of each year's income to put to the.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And my third question is, does a town receive a financial report from the Historical Society?
They get the 990s, right?
I mean, do you have, it seems to me the town owns the property. You're leasing it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I've never seen a financial report from the whole society.
Well, I personally, I don't think that the society needs to tell the town how they're spending their money. You know, as long as they're complying with the lease and maintaining the property, which they have been doing, we're not entitled to see a nonprofit board's, all their records and financial stuff, just because they're a tenant. You know, think about that landlords and tenants. Tenants don't have to tell their landlords, you know, what money they have in the bank or anything.
But I disagree. I mean, I think this is a, something of great interest to town. Nat's doing a great job, but he's not going to live forever. None of us.
None of us are going to live. Pretty much guaranteed, we're all going to die.
That's right. And so in the interest, long range interest for the town, I mean, we, we all have huge emotional input to this, this whole Historical Society, those of us in this. And I just, I've never seen any kind of a responsible income report from, from this whole group. And what they share with the, with the gang up on, up on 131 Beyond Port Clyde, is there something? It's a, now we're spreading out from Port Clyde to Tenet Harbor to St. George, right? Up to the Robinson House and so forth. And, and there's a lot, are they sharing the money around?
Well, I think that is a question for the Historical Society. And obviously, you can talk to their board and attend their meetings. And I'm sure they'll be happy to share. There's maybe the answer behind you.
I don't know that I have the answer, but I think I know who does. James Filene Olano, as a nonprofit, they would be required to better file a federal Form 990. And so I'm sure that that happens. And Scott, our Chair, is Chairman of the Historical Society. So could you maybe clarify that for Ann and for everyone else? It sounds like, you know, there's this reporting and it goes into a huge abyss. And I think people want to see some level of it.
Well, 990 has to be filed by law.
Yes.
And Jenny Malte, our Financial Person of the Historical Society, has done that in conjunction with Marshall Point. They have helped, you know, finalize the 990 for the last couple of years anyway. Of course, John Fallon did it before that. So it's all accounted for.
So what Scott's talking about is a form that's filed with the Internal Revenue Service by nonprofit organizations. And you can go online and look up at what they report about their finances.
Do we have directions for how to get to there?
Why don't you, Scott, who's two seats behind you, is their president, and he can, he can share that with you. Are there any other questions for the, about the lighthouse? Okay, if there aren't any questions, if people want to speak with respect to the lighthouse lease, raise your hand if anybody wants to talk either way. Yes, Dale?
My name's Dale Pearson. I'm involved with Historical Society. I'm trustee. And the whole lease thing is so critical to us because you talked, you heard about Nat and the amount of money being spent and planning ahead. If we had to have a short-term lease, would be very discerning to us to make any future plans in how we store and preserve the things that we take in, not knowing where we might have to be next year or the year after. If anyone, you know, we have tens of thousands of documents.
So are you talking about the lighthouse or you should?
The lighthouse, they have thousands of documents.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
All those things are imperative. And not speaking from that, but we have joint meetings all the time. And the length of the lease is critical to us. And we were very happy to not have to battle it out and come to an agreement. So I was very pleased with that. I think I hope really much.
Well, good. We were glad to, I think, that we don't have any competing leases on the ballot. If there are no other comments with respect to the lighthouse, then we can shift to the old library lease. This is the building on Main Street that is, says old library on it. It's owned by the town. And I think it was six years ago, the town leased it to the Historical Society. And their lease was up, was it last summer? And it's this, okay, so their five-year lease that they've had is coming due. And because these are town-owned properties owned by the voters of St. George, that's why we have, have to vote on this on the ballot, because we own this as a group of people. And so their lease is up. And Scott, if you want to talk about the, the use of that building and the lease, tell people why that's a good idea and why they should vote for it.
My name is Scott Hodgson. I'm President of St. Wood Historical Society. As Jane just explained, we're entering into new leases. We have a lease extension now through June.
That's what I thought.
The town gave us. So we could get this business done. What is proposed in the new lease for us and the schoolhouse we have next door is a full term renewed at the end of five years by the Select Board only. And then another five years, same process, five years, up to 20 years. At 20 years, then the town, you, the public, has to vote on it again to give us a new lease. I believe that's what we're getting. So just to quickly talk about some accomplishments we've had, what we've made is in the last five, six years, I've only been on board a little less than a year and a half as far as president. So this, a lot of this happened outside my realm. New roof was put on the museum at 38 Main Street. New exterior paint job. The steps and ramp have been painted. The gardens and landscaping are maintained. New interior LED lighting was just installed to save energy costs. A new spot for the stack is installed for the same reason. Basement has had added insulation to save energy costs also. That's, that's fairly. Future goals, and these are pending based on a lease. Possibly install heat pumps as a way to heat, cool, and dehumidify our collections. A lot of it's paper. And it needs environmentally controlled conditions so that it will be preserved for the future. We'd like to dehumidify part of the basement as a place to store more items, as a storage room down there. And we'd like to maybe add some furnishings to increase our display space. Would you like me to speak about the schoolhouse at the same time?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, this is kind of all inclusive. At the schoolhouse meeting, we have a list of projects coming up to repair and repaint ceilings, sand and refinish some of the flooring, install new lighting, check out the windows and see, you know, how they're doing. And I'm seeing now that we need to paint the exteriors. So all, all of this is done with money from people who donate. The town does not spend its money on these improvements and on these plans. They do give us the lease and they do, for the museums, pay the insurance for the structure. And we pay for our own insurance for the contents of the liability. So everything that's done is done through the, through the work of volunteers, through your donations. So we think we're doing a pretty good job. We've had hundreds and hundreds of hours volunteerism at the museums, between the front desk, cataloging, archiving, events, having volunteers ready to, to host events. So, but it's more than the physical improvements, obviously. St. George Historical Society is about the collections, knowledge, maintenance, and sharing of our town's history. Through 14 programs a year, we're educating the public about our rich local history. These buildings give us spaces to work, catalog, and research. All work is done, as I said, by volunteers. But it also, through these efforts, I think it's extending the hospitality and goodwill of our town. People come into these facilities, get their questions answered, get to look around, learn about history. And I think it's a, it becomes a welcoming, helpful area in all regards. In 2024, our expenses for the museum, Robinson House, Schoolhouse Museum, were just over $18,000. In 2023, about $15,500. And again, all that money comes from donations. So we're here for you, the public, and know that without your support, we wouldn't exist. We hope to have your support on May 11th at the ballot box. Thank you very much.
Do people have any questions for Scott?
I'd like to say something.
Sure, go ahead, Steve.
I'm Steve Cartwright on the Select Board. And I just feel we are so fortunate to have the Historical Society and, and all, all of you and the commitment to this. Because it's our story. It's history. It's, it's who we were and to some extent, who we are now. And, and I, full disclosure, I've been a volunteer because Dale Pearson's a great arm twister. I've been up on the roof thinking, I hope I don't fall off. And it's, it's just a really worthwhile endeavor. And I think it benefits all ages and, and visitors. But, but I think the biggest benefit is to all of us right here who live here in this community. And you think of programs like the recent one that Steve Lindsay did on the granite industry. This place was packed. And, and that says something about, about how important it is and the value of it all. So, and this is a great turnout. Thank you all for being here.
Go ahead. Do you want to put in a plug?
We've got next Friday's Saturday, excuse me, thank you. Carolyn always is correcting me. We have an event at Blueberry Cove where it's starting, all about Elmore, Part Snack.
Oh, right.
Trying to do the village, the Search and Destroy. And Steve's involved.
Of course.
Yes, his family's been in that area for a long time. Did anybody else want to speak in support or opposition to the Historical Society leases?
Am I allowed to say any?
Of course.
We're not sure, Tammy.
See what I'm going to say, right? I'm Tammy Willie. I'm obviously on the Select Board. I'm a trustee with the Historical Society. I just do a lot of work over here at the old schoolhouse. And several times a year, we have students come down from the school. So it's a great resource for the kids up at our St. George School. So I just wanted to mention that. We have lots of visitors come through all the year.
Yeah.
I can't get her, let her get away with that. She does so much. She's our, she's our stalwart. You know, it, it takes, it takes a village kind of thing. We all have different skills. I'm an arm twister. Tammy operates behind the scenes. And when you come and you think, oh, jeez, we got to deal with this, Tammy's already done it.
Well, years ago, I bought one of those books about the town. And I only realized recently that Tammy was younger. So, so I can attest to that. Any other comments? Okay, then. Well, thank you for coming to, to this hearing on those issues. And now we'll move on to the youth and scouting property. Brandon, you want to start by telling us what?
No.
Or do you want to have John, John Fallon talk about what the parcels are and whatnot before Ashley does her presentation? Or is that all in one?
It's a little bit in one, but I'll let Tim and John speak a bit about sort of the history of the property and how we got to today, if either of you would like to share.
How I got here today was my sister. I will tell you that the Youth and Scouting Council, we formed in 92 with basically a boosters club for the scouts and the girl scouts. And at that time, we had a lot of kids involved. For a bit, we had a lot of parents and a lot of adults involved. The first thing that we acquired at that time was the land that's behind the transfer station directly behind that, the ballast, which then Phyllis Fowler gave us that with the idea that it would be a place that we could have a campsite and whatnot. And we used that a lot. And then we had the opportunity to buy the property on Snow. Bought that in, oh, 97. Bought that from Bill Kennedy. And the idea of having another campsite. And we used it a lot, but we found out that we needed facilities. You know, the, the guys didn't have a problem going on the wood, but the girls, we had a lot of.
Oh, sure, please.
We were going to build a facility, you know, have restroom and stuff. Like, we had a lot of people involved back then. And they decided to build the lodge that we have today. And to let you know that that lodge is built by volunteers and the kids with donations. And in the process, from there, we we found out that we didn't have enough of the right of ways, we bought another piece from Mr. Kennedy to give us a right of way right to Snow's Point Road. And then also during that time, we had another piece of property given on the other side of the wetlands behind the transfer station. That's the second parcel that actually meets onto the Meadow Brook property. So there's, there's two pieces, actually, there's two parcels there, and there's one parcel in, in Snow's Point. We built the building in two thousand, let's say, with a lot of help from the kids. And what has happened since then, the number of kids involved in the scouting program, and especially the boy scout program, has, has dwindled quite a bit. Without the kids, we don't have the parents, we don't have the support. Uh, we try to keep it going, one of the things that I've always said that with boy scouting, I, I was involved in the scouting program for a long time, but we are, had some big competition. The St. George Recreation Department. Big competition, they're in a lot of programs, they're doing a lot of stuff for the kids. And what we're, it was in trying to keep the organization going, keep it building up, and we think that right now is the time to maybe pass it on to the rec committee. Hopefully, they can still support the kids, do something for the kids, it's, it's all about. Don't know what else to tell you.
So there are three parcels altogether, one that has the building on it, is that right?
That's correct.
And how many acres go with that?
We have it in the presentation.
Okay, so Ashley will show us in the presentation. All right. Do people have questions for Tim about the history of the youth and scouting property? Ashley's presentation is about what the town will do with the property if we vote yes. So no questions for Tim? Okay, thank you, Ashley. Ashley's our Parks and Rec Director, if you haven't met her, how long have you been here now?
About nine months, eight months.
We're so lucky to have you.
Um, we'll give Brandon a second. Uh, I'm gonna do my best not to repeat information that you just heard, but I have no guarantees. Um, a lot of the information at the very beginning is very similar to what he just spoke on.
Oh, Brian's presentation.
A big piece of this first present, first part of the presentation is, uh, results from the Compre comprehensive plan that a lot of you probably had input on. There was clear evidence that there's both want and need for the department to have their own facility. Um, some of the statistics, in case it's too small, ninety-eight point four percent voted in favor of man maintaining or expanding recreational land use. Seventy-three point nine were in favor of expanding senior services. Fifty-two percent voted to increase the number of trails we have in our community. And just, I have thirty percent voted for additional, uh, accessible walking paths. Instead of trails, walking paths are a little different. Um, those are some pretty high numbers to start with, uh, and I think it just shows clear evidence that the community's speaking on this, and it's a clear want. The family first meeting was partially parents, community, and the comprehensive planning committee, they all got together, it was an open invite, I think. Um,
Yes, at the school.
Okay, that's what I thought, sorry.
It was mostly school parents, but
Yep.
there were a fair number of people that were not in that age group.
Yeah, um, there was a strong desire for, again, a rec center of some sort, and if we can't get a rec center, then somewhere where community members can meet and do various activities. Um, increased recreation beyond sports, uh, I have only been here eight months, and I hear that a lot. Having a space would give me the chance to do that for all of you. Emphasis on having multi-generational activities, again, I can reach anyone from the three-year-olds to the ninety-five, hundred-year-olds. And provide organized activities along with spontaneous activities, it's hard to do both of those when I don't have a dedicated facility or space to schedule that on. You just got a lot of this information, um, youth and scouting, they have been going for just over thirty years. Um, there's been hundreds of boy scouts and girl scouts that have gone through the programs here and have utilized that building. Uh, inside the building, if you're unaware, there's a very large open space with, uh, high ceilings. There is a full kitchen, bathroom with multiple stalls, uh, multiple storage closets, and a very large storage room. Um, and like it was said, the property is on just over ten acres of land. Acquiring this building, as you've already heard, would provide the department with a separate space to call home. Um, the community wants it, and it's been a discussion for many years. Building a huge facility is a very big project. So I truly believe if we acquired this, it would be a great starting point, and we could go from there on what's to come next down the road. These are just some of the ideas that, uh, the department and the committee have thought of. Game activity nights, this could be anything from come play Skitbo to Dungeons and Dragons, or board games, cribbage nights, movie nights, self-explanatory. Um, senior events, again, it would provide me with a space to do both an organized activity or spontaneous activities for that group of people. It's a very large meeting space, um, with multiple tables and chairs already available. And another idea would be town or community, uh, dances.
This photo here, um, is present day, one of the pieces that sort of led to the youth and scouting group. Um, looking to hand this off is the, the furnace blew up in the building. Because of it, a lot of the insulation had to be taken out, um, drywall taken down and so on, and so the building is in need of some repair.
Uh, additionally, uh, the idea to have various fitness classes to run our summer clinic, uh, summer camps through here. Um, a big item would be parks and rec equipment storage. If you are unaware, upstairs is a joy office, and on the backside of that is a pretty large office space, and about ninety percent of it is taken up by my things.
Soccer balls.
Soccer balls, t-shirts, baseballs, you can outfit every team that you see upstairs. So if we were able to have a dedicated space for that, I wouldn't have to walk up and down a few flights of stairs every time I need something, but also it would give Brandon the opportunity to utilize that office space and turn it into something that could be more productive for the town rather than just storage. Um, and another idea we've had for this, uh, to acquire equipment, to rent it out to community members, this could be anything from snowshoes and snow skis to, um, cross-country skis, excuse me, to kayaks or canoes, fishing equipment, bikes if we were to gain biking paths, um, I think there's a lot of flexibility with that. Where it sits on over ten acres of land, the opportunity for hiking trails is very large, um, or a fitness trail. A fitness trail, if you're unfamiliar, uh, the Penn Bay has one. You walk a fitness trail, you stop at different stands essentially, and it's very minimal equipment, move-your-body, um, activity. It's not necessarily a workout, but it gets you moving and stretching, um, I've done it multiple times, and it's a very good relaxing adventure, um, opportunity for a dog park, which we do not have one. Uh, disc golf is a very big up-and-coming sport, there's plenty of space to put at least a nine-hole course on the property. Um, and then I would love to see some form of gazebo and additional picnic tables for anyone to use at their convenience.
I'll just add, none of these projects are committed to or anything, I, I when was, when I was approached by the Youth and Scouting Council, I said, let me see if there's any sort of area in town that feels like they could utilize it, and so I said, Ashley, is there anything that you could do with a building, a lodge building that sits on ten acres, and she came back a very enthusiastic list, obviously, I'll think, especially projects that require investment would, would be decided on by voters when we set the budget at town meeting every year, so just wanted to, uh, make sure that was level set.
We could have added that at the beginning, but
Yes.
But these are some great ideas.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, building needs, like Brandon said, the furnace blew up unfortunately. Um, so you can see on the photo that there needs to be insulation and drywall, a lot of that is actually already donated. And it's sitting in there waiting to be utilized, um, so that's something to think of, some of the equipment, or not equipment, sorry, some of the materials that we would need to do some of these improvements already exist. Um,
Tim, could you speak to what has already been purchased?
What's on site right now is there's enough insulation to instantly, or replace all the insulation that's strapped into a whole lot of place. The other thing we have done in we've all been buying, we've paid forever, we put a new roof on it, helping us develop something. The, the materials that are set on site now is basically the insulation.
I have a new furnace. Is there a new furnace?
No, there's not a new furnace at this point.
Yes. Um, there's also shiplapping to complete some of the walls, um, in the building as well. Like Brandon just said, I have thrown out like forty-five ideas already in five minutes. Um, and a lot of those would be wonderful, but obviously there is some TLC. Um, but we can prioritize that, obviously, like you just stated, if we wanna utilize this building all year round and keep it in good functioning existence, then we would have to obviously add some form of heat. Um, a water heater is in need, and obviously, like I've stated, the insulation and drywall. Completing those projects would be big projects, but that and some work on the bathroom would put it in working function. Um, and then in time, you go through painting and everything, and there needs work on railings and the ramps for entrances and replacing some of the doors, but that's all things that can happen down the road after you guys all vote yes. Again, new roof, uh, just over a year ago, or two years ago?
Last year.
Last year, that's what I believe, um, there's very nice heavy-duty storage shelves, again, for all of my equipment, or the director's equipment for the town. Um, kitchen appliances, there is a stove in there, there would need to be a fridge, but there's a lot of other cooking items. Um, there's, as I said, several tables and chairs for the big open space, space. The insulation materials, exterior doors, there's a few exterior doors sitting inside, um, and there is a toilet that just needs to be hooked up.
So that is the, um, Snow's Point property. Do you wanna take questions about that specific property?
Do people have any questions about that property?
What do we wait for?
Yeah, that's it, that's
There's a, there's a hand.
That's what I've said.
Fine, Nancy Badley, um, I was wondering if the town does acquire this property, how much is it gonna cost the taxpayers? And if so, are you gonna do a lot of fundraising to counterbalance it?
I can't speak on the first part of that, um, numbers are Brandon's job in regards to budgeting in town and taxes and all that. But I can speak to the second half, that we have the opportunity to fundraise. There are multiple grants that exist for some of the specific things that I would love to see happen. And additionally, I am absolutely spoiled to have the boosters group that we have, they are very helpful, very dedicated group of people that work really hard to get a lot done in our community.
To get more specific, the intent is that any work here would be scaled in a way that would result in a minimal impact to annual taxes. Historically, the Parks and Rec Department has always been one of our smallest departments, but not when it comes from a budget perspective, but not because of a lack of program output or ambitions. You know, I first joined the Parks and Rec Committee maybe in two thousand and eleven, and there was talk of wanting to pursue a rec center back then, right, and so that was fourteen years ago that, at least that this conversation's been happening. I mean, this is a way that
No.
Uh, the, the way that I'm viewing this is that this is how the department can take a step towards an actual facility, uh, that is the most fiscally responsible, uh, and, you know, we can make sure that any sort of improvements to property, which we have not historically had to be, have paid for, or managed in a way that is not, um, making a major impact on annual taxes.
So
We'll also find that this community has the most wonderful volunteer spirit of any place I've seen for a long time. I mean, there's a lot of people willing to do a lot of things, so.
That's how they got their roof done. Um, I don't wanna speak for you, but I'm quite sure a lot of it came from local business owner and people putting in their time and effort. I agree with you, I think that we're, again, kinda spoiled, I like to use that word, that we have a lot of people that are willing to get their hands dirty and help out when it's in need.
The other thing, as Tim mentioned, numbers around scouting have decreased year over year here in town, which means the number of volunteers that you can attract, leverage decreases with it, right, whereas our Parks and Recreation Department, um, has not at all, and would sort of would have a much larger volunteer pool to leverage folks that are excited about the program opportunity, so I think it's a great point.
Can we clarify one point relative to your question? The land and the facility is being donated. So the costs of those going forward to fix it up the way we want.
Right.
Uh, sorry if I, you know, missed the whole part of the question.
Yeah, I missed that too. I know the Parks and Rec Committee folks are here, so if you wanna talk, say anything, you know, in this conversation, feel free, Brian.
Uh, no, I'm Brian Walsh, I'm the chairman of the Rec Committee, um, we're pretty excited about it, we would love to have this happen. I'm also involved with Youth and Scouting Council. Um, the property does have, does need some work, but I actually said to you, there's a lot of opportunity here, and, you know, we could do a lot for the community.
Okay, was there another question? Yes.
Hi, Chris Caffrey, um, what kind of roads go, it looks like a pretty big parcel there, is it a good road or to the facility, wanted to make it a, a Four Seasons property, could you be able to get there?
Yeah, it's, so it's off of Snow's Point Road, and then it has a long driveway that's in surprisingly good condition. I was just up it recently, and, um, it's a gravel driveway with a big parking lot. Um, but yeah, you can access it, uh, Four Seasons for sure.
Does it make sense to have some kind of opportunity for people to visit there before they'll vote? Something to think about, we don't have to decide right now, but, you know, now that
I mean, it's, it's not our property, so I don't know that we
Well, that's true.
Permission, uh, but it's the
We can talk to the youth and scouting folks, and if that makes sense, we'll put it on the town's website if that, something like that was coming, yes.
I, again, it's the lane, the lane of Some of you who know me here know that I've been teaching yoga in the community for the past several years. And the first year was up above the Sea Star Shop in Port Clyde, which worked fine once the bulk of their season and their prison tours and all was over, but didn't otherwise. It interfered with their business, so I was given an opportunity to teach across the street at Forty-seven Main. Uh, they are now rethinking the use of all of that property, so myself and the two other folks there that currently teach fitness classes may well be homeless. And
Beautiful space for you. Bring down, bring all your friends.
So, you know, my comment to this is, there is a need for this, this community. Um, if you go to a yoga studio If you go to a yoga studio and you want to pay for a class, even in this general area, you're looking at twenty to twenty-five dollars a class. For a lot of people here, that is out of reach. Also, as we get during the winter, it's so easy to be isolated in the community. And having something, these folks come together, just sometimes it's chit-chatting at the end, you know? And people making a connection. When I'm teaching in the summer, there are people that are year-round residents, people that are summer residents, and some really, really interesting people who are just staying in the community and just sharing. And they generally make substantial donations. I just, I, um, I donate my time because this is my retirement gig as part of being in the community. So any money that comes in through a free will donation goes to support that effort, at least on my part. So for me, I would love to see this happen. Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, I'm John Batier, and I am part of the St. Orange Youth and Scouting for New Partnership. Um, and I have been for probably twenty-five or more years. Uh, very near, near my heart, I am a Girl Scout leader, have met there for several, several years. Um, was very disappointed when we couldn't because of, you know, things that happened with the furnace and stuff. I highly recommend anybody going out and checking it out. You will be pleasantly surprised to see it in person. I am very willing to go down there and be there for a certain amount of time so people can come in, um, ask questions, walk around. Spent lots and lots of hours at this building and um I love it. And my hope is that it becomes part of the community so that everybody can enjoy it as much as I can or I have. I know that Tim and John probably, and they are available, um, and very willing to be down there as well. Um, they have, you know, this is, they are um beginning thoughts here and um we need to keep it going. We, we really do. So I will, yes, I will be there for anybody that knows.
So we'll work on coordinating that and also having um Ashley's slideshow and the leases on the election um part of the website that's going to be uploaded soon. So that if any of you want to read or watch or learn more, um, you and your friends will have the ability to do that. So why don't you move on to the next?
So again, the, the other piece of property that comes with this donation is two parcels of land off of Wallston Road that we felt like made the most sense to fall under the Conservation Commission's management. So Ken is here and will speak a bit about that. If you can see.
It's a little tough to see here. I'm Ken Olber, the chairman of the Conservation Commission. And when Brandon was first offered about this donation of land, he came to the Conservation Commission and asked us, is there something that we could do with it? And it was an obvious thing for us that we can expand the trails in town. So if you can see up here on the, the orange pieces of the two parcels that totaled twenty-five acres of land and along the, the border that borders the, the transfer station is about a fifty-foot path there. So we would have access to get in through that point and we'd be able to put parking right near that, near uh Wallston Road there at the entrance. And we looked at it as an opportunity to expand the trails in town. Um, we have trails that will be opening soon at the Old Woods Farm parcel here. There's about two and a half acres, two and a half miles of trails on eighty-three acres there. The next two pieces in green of the uh Water Company property, we've had discussions with Water Company property that with their permission, we could have trails that make connection from Old Woods Farm up to um the scouting property. So that made sense. And we've had um lots of requests for longer trails in town for people to get out and, and walk on the trails. Majority of the trails in town right now are all less than a mile long. So people would like to see places where they have more of an opportunity to uh hike on the trails. And then I think somebody mentioned earlier, from the transfer station property, we go over to the Meadowbrook property, with the trail there that was that we acquired that property from Maine Coast Hatters Trust probably seven or eight years ago now. Um, and have trails there as well. So I think there's an indication from that same survey that the complaint committee uh had this, this past summer uh in terms of a need for and desire for more trails in town, especially longer trails in town. Uh, so I think it makes sense from our perspective that here's an opportunity to do that. The other thing you would do is um, we would get from that area there where we could park at the entrance to the scouting property, if we made a trail all the way across the Water Company property, then we'd have parking for people to go to both sets of trails. I guess I'd emphasize too that these would, would be walking trails. Anything that has to do with the Water Company property um has to be foot-type traffic only. We wouldn't allow any motorized vehicles on any of these trails. And um you know, and it would be maintained by the Conservation Commission. And so all, all the trails in town are all volunteer work. We have a great group of people maintaining the trails. And we have additional um community members that come and help when we, when we put out a request for help for trail maintenance.
And you've also received some grants in the past for development of trails.
Yeah, we've, we've had good success with requesting various grants. We had a grant for Meadowbrook property trails. We had a grant for the conversion of the four-point trail to a universal access trail. Oh, and Old Woods Farm from Land for Main Futures for that property. So we've been quite successful and it's been minimal cost to the town. And we've had um great contributions from the community um to support that effort where we had to have a matching portion of a grant.
Ca- Ken, just a, a question, how much of the, those properties are wetlands?
Well, there's some, you go back to the map. Um, this is Meadowbrook right here, with this green trail marker, which goes across the Water Company property. Starts back in here. This is the Brook.
It is the Brook, okay.
The Brook goes all the way out along this border out to the Meadowbrook property. So there are areas that would require a little bit more effort.
Yeah, that's, that's questioning how much effort was going to be involved.
You know, but we've been successful in doing that on other trails and the amount of board work we've needed and we've minimized that.
Chris?
Ken, can you uh show us the Wallston Road that?
Wallston Road?
Yeah, you could put your finger on the transfer station so people know where that is. Yeah.
It's just past the transfer station on your right if you were heading towards the harbor.
That's the Meadowbrook part. That's off Turkey Cove.
Turkey Cove Road.
We'll make sure to put all of this online so that folks can see it more easily.
One other thing that we talked about in the Conservation Commission was having, again, large pieces for environmental contingency, you know, connectivity. Uh, our society and our spaces get so chopped up. With having Meadowbrook nearby, the Water Company, um, the other town-owned property and uh Old Woods Farm is a big, big, big piece of property from a wildlife to move without necessarily impacting anybody else.
Any other questions or comments people wanted to make about this aspect of the donation that'll be on the ballot? No? All right then.
Thanks, Ken.
Um, is there any other business for the public hearing? No? All right then, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll give you a few minutes if you want to leave because then we'll start the select board meeting right after that. Oh, sure.
Excuse, please.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Let's quiet down for a moment.
I was under the impression there might be some conversation about the Port Clyde general store. Is that?
That's at the select board meeting that will start as soon as people come and go or whatever. We'll have a few minutes for that. It's red.
Didn't come up.
Is it still red?
Yeah, but the video's off down here.
But that's this computer.
It's on there twice.
But you see what I mean? That's not the owl, okay?
Harris' owl. Town manager is his, I think. There we are, okay. Where were we? Oh, communications. Did any select board members have any communications from the public to share? I had um.
They all went to you.
Well, I had one from some very satisfied users of the um EMS services over the weekend who said what a great experience um they had with members of our team. So I wanted to share that. Anything else?
Uh, I had one um, a resident reached out to ask if the select board would be interested in pursuing a local dog warden. It's essentially something that was more specific maybe than um what, what state statute covers. That just both around leashes, which we do at times around on town-owned property. But um his concern was more with a neighbor's dog that was loose. And yeah, and I was coming over to, to his property and the town not really having any sort of mechanism for enforcement there. And so I said I would pass that request along to you all.
Well, I think it's worth considering. Maybe you and the dog warden could come up with some thoughts. And we'll discuss them at another meeting. How does that sound?
Another meeting.
All right. Um, the warrant for expenditures. Irene sent it out maybe around four o'clock. I had a chance to look at it. Um, it's sitting down there in front of Tammy. That's the only one, the only copy. Did anybody have, well, if you want to pass that around and look at it, oh, Irene has another copy. Did anybody have any questions?
I didn't think there was anything that I had, uh, was out of line in terms of what we've done previously.
Is the Harris computer system licensing, is that the, that's the one year, one year?
Eleven thousand.
Yes, that, yeah, that's the trio cost for one year.
One year of licensing. That's crazy. That's the most economical option. There is one other option and it's no, more expensive and less.
Any other questions about the warrant?
We didn't hear what she said.
Oh, she was just saying that there, there are very limited alternative options to this software that the town uses for its finance system and everything else. And that we pay, what, eleven thousand a year for?
It's, it's a trio system. Many uh communities use that system.
What, uh, what's the breadth of that software used in the uh, in the, in the town office? What does it cover? General ledger? Uh, I don't use Harris to do a registration of anything?
Covers um assessing, it covers uh the payroll.
Commitment to do the property taxes and send out those bills. It does vehicle registration, boat registration. It covers just the the general ledger, everything that we do in the checking account. It covers payroll. But I'm sure there's a lot I'm missing that it does.
It's it's very comprehensive. Any other software that we have is minor in comparison because Trio really is set up for a government to run.
Less than a thousand dollars a month around the town office.
Yeah, essentially.
I think that's a fair value with a retired IT guy.
Right. Okay. So then Irene, if you want to send that around, we can sign it. Before we hear the presentation from the school, did anybody from the public have any general comments they wanted to make? Not about something on the agenda. No. Okay, Jessica, you want to proceed with your presentation?
Hi, everybody. I'm Jessica Berry. I'm the Special Ed Director at the St. George School and I'm here today to give a. An overview, but also a story about special education at St. George School. I've been there about five years. I. Started there when they have just begun developing in-house programs for some of their media students prior to that. They used to, we used to, I should say, we have they. Uh, tuition students out to other schools. Now they are hundred percent all in our school. And we serve all students. And since starting there, we developed all kinds of programs. So I'm just here to tell you a little bit about that. And I think of. Most interest kind of percolating in the community is about the three-year-olds we are adding to the school. So I'm going to talk about the law and why we're doing that as well. I just want to remind you, I might be here telling you this amazing story of special education, but it's all contributed to a really amazing. Group of educators who are so committed to our students and making sure they feel cared for in a sense of belonging. So I'm really just representing them tonight. So we're going to start with a little bit of law and then you understand how we make decisions around special ed. So there's something called free, appropriate public education, which is the legal right of children with disabilities to receive an education that is free of charge. And tailored to their individual needs. The education must be provided in the least restrictive environment, which I'll tell you a little about. And should give the child access to the same educational opportunities that their peers about disabilities. So this is all covered under IDEA. So the decisions that I make on how or my assistant here. Hey, about how we fund things and the programs we create are entirely due to this law. So whatever goes into something called an individual education plan, which is created by a team based on evaluations of a student. We have to provide legally have to provide fund support. And so that could be speech, OT, physical therapy, a one-to-one ed tech nursing. Especially design instruction, which is the instructor delivered to that student. Transportation or the use of communication devices. They need to be provided to all these services need to be provided to the fullest extent and as appropriate as possible. With their non-disabled peers, meaning in this school, in this community, in their classroom with their peers. And so an out of district placement, meaning like we send them to another school that has a program. Or a special purpose private school that runs about a hundred thousand dollars per student, but it's the most restrictive and the most expensive. And so at in two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight school year, school districts will be responsible for educating. Children three to twenty-two. So now with that, I just want to tell you a little bit about the programs that we currently have at St. George School. And so we have a life skills program. This is one of our more restrictive or specialized programs. It's really for students. With higher needs, intellectual disabilities, maybe they're on the autism spectrum or have. Functional needs like communication, like taking care of themselves, life skills. We have a composite program, which is really they can be independent throughout the school. They don't need like a one a person with them all day. But they might have pretty profound academic needs. Um, and then recently in the last year on its own kind of developed our early childhood special education teacher and program. Because we added a pre-K program and have students with needs in that. We also are have been adding three-year-olds. I'll talk more about that at the end. And servicing kind of into kindergarten, first grade. These are kids who just need more developmental time. So this teacher has a specialty in child development and supports all of those students. Our resource room, which probably many of you are familiar with, this is where maybe a student has. Some learning needs, but they're within maybe a year of their peers in their classroom. They might get support in the classroom or some small group out of the classroom to provide that instruction and maybe math or literacy. And then we also have related services, which are occupational therapy, speech therapy and social work. So all these things kind of are happening within. Within, between, around all the other classrooms in our school. So I'm going to tell you a story about how since we have started these programs, we have seen our special ed, you might see numbers. But the needs of students, when they come into our school, go down significantly, requiring far less intensive services. And I know people really like to hear on how much less it's costing taxpayers, how it's impacting families, but really. How successful our students are because of these programs. So you'll see since. This highlighted piece is when the program started, we started to keep our students in. And then in twenty-two, twenty-three, we added pre-K. So you'll see that our numbers while they're holding at forty, forty. You'll see over here, the number of kids in our specialized programs are going down. That means day treatment because of significant behavioral needs. Um, or maybe our composite room, they have some academic needs, but still a little bit of behavioral needs. All those are going down because of the interventions we're providing. So because the needs are going down and our special ed caseloads are going down. When I arrived at the school, we had primarily our kids were clustered in those upper grades, lots of kids with IEPs. Like fifth to eighth grade. Now we're starting to see the the success we're having. It's mostly in those early childhood classrooms. We are moving kids in. In out of special education because they're getting the services they need or they require far less service time or support. So actually next year, we are for the first time. Wow, since we started, we are reducing the amount of special education teachers that we need. Uh, because our caseloads are getting smaller and for the first time since I think we started our behavioral or day treatment program. We didn't need one this year because kids don't require that level of support. Because we're providing them early intervention, which is shown. There's all kinds of science to show that earlier you intervene. The more impact that has. So we're getting to kids in pre-K kindergarten and they're moving out of requiring that level of service. So that means less teachers. Less staff, less need. We used to have, I'm trying to remember, yeah, about twenty-two, twenty-three. Across the school, eight, nine, ten, one-on-one ed techs. Uh, meaning a student behavior was so severe that they had to have someone with them all day, recess, lunch, moving around the hallway. Due to, it was all behavioral. Over the last few years, because of the work we're doing, we are now down to only two kids requiring one-to-one support. And they're in first grade or below. We have no kids above that need one-to-one support because of the work we've been doing. So I want to talk about early intervention because that's really what's happening at school. That's the biggest impact. That's where we can make the biggest difference. And it's really just about aligning resources with evidence-based practices. Best practice, what the science tells us will make the most impact and it is pushing our resources towards our earliest learners. So what are we doing that's working? We are taking our occupational and speech therapist and integrating them into our K and kindergarten classrooms. They are supporting language and vocabulary development, social communication, fine motor skills. So. Learning how to hold a headset, learning how to strengthen their hands. Um, gross motor, learning how to move around, jump, hop, skip. And then regulation skills for those big feelings. They are getting everything they need to be ready to start learning. And then that we've interventions of starting a kindergarten. So we're working on all this academic skills. And we have an early childhood special education teacher focused just on those younger learners. And then we are working really hard while this is maybe not what other schools do, but feels really important to me. I'm spending a lot of time with my team, finding every family with a child ages birth. I don't care if he had that baby yesterday. To four, to start connecting with them, to start to get to know them, to start to educate them. Here are some ways you can support your child. And and also to do developmental screenings. I think we'll probably be by the time we're done, one of the first communities, maybe in the whole state. That is providing regular developmental screening to all of their children in the town, zero to four. To make sure they are getting the services they need, not not special ed services, but prevention. Like, how can you help not get to this point of great need? So this is where it's starting to really show our impact. Our first year of pre-K, from here, I'm tall right now, uh, first year of pre-K, twenty-two, twenty-three. At a forty-four percent special education population. This year, their first grade, eighteen percent. Twenty-three, twenty-four, we had forty-six percent or down to twenty-five percent. We're hoping to continue to see that trend. This is our current year. We have thirty-seven percent special ed population. Because I know pretty much all the kids in the community at this point. I know that next year we have about a thirty-five percent population of kids with IEPs. And the following year, about thirty-three percent. But it it fluctuates a little bit because once you get to know kids, they come into school. You might find they need evaluation or get dismissed, but I don't think we've ever been below thirty percent. So now I'm going to tell you about, if you've heard about it, yes, we are inviting three-year-olds into the school, but let me tell you why and why we have to do it because of the legal requirement. So there's something called last year, we had March or April, pretty much overnight, we heard like rumbling and then the commissioner. Wanted to meet with everyone and told us that we were going to have to take on the responsibility of providing IDPs, IP services to children. Who are three and four. That means what I told you before, free, appropriate public education in their least restrictive environment. All schools in Maine have to do this by the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. Currently, a hundred percent of the cost associated with bringing these children in and providing them services are covered by the Department of Education. It is in statute. I don't know if any of you know about the DOE. We can hope that will stay the same. We might see it change, but right now it's a hundred percent covered. So. This is what is legally required by us to provide services. So we have to do child find, meaning that's kind of what we're already doing. We need to find, screen all the children to make sure that we are providing services to any child who might have a disability. We have to evaluate children. So it says three-year-olds. But they have evaluation to start. If they're in early intervention through the state, we get a call by the time they're two, two-point-three. I know that sounds silly, but we are evaluating two-year-olds. We have to have them evaluated, IEPs implemented before they turn three. And by their third birthday, they have to be in a program. That means childcare, CBS or the school. We started this by thinking three-year-olds would go to CBS. I'll tell you a little bit about that in a minute. But they have to be in their program where kids, the population is made of less than fifty percent of kids with IEPs to make it least restricted. So a few kids as possible with IEPs. And then providing all the services that are in the IDP. So this year, we've started to do this. We came into it with a plan. We already have pre-K. Easy. We'll provide services to the four-year-olds that are in pre-K. We have seven of them. What we did not account for is the barriers that we're experiencing. Child Development Services, who has a classroom, a few of them in Rockland, really right now, provide services to all the kids in the state. That are three and four. Because of staffing, they can't fit any of our kids in their program. They don't have enough space. So in January, I figured out how to build a three-year-old program and now we have eight three-year-olds. We have evaluated and qualified eight unexpectedly, eight three-year-olds and provided programming to make sure we meet the legal requirements. But also just to do what's best for kids. So our pre-K, where are we? So one of the things that were. Uh, is a challenge is that our pre-K enrollment has been over sixteen kids every year. Or around that, and that's really the cap. Can you imagine having sixteen four-year-olds in a classroom? Like, you don't really want to go higher than that. This year, my pre-K teacher allowed me and we had a waiver from the state to put nineteen. She's asked me not to do that to her again. But we wanted to be sure all the kids can come. I can't just look at one family and say, no, not yours. So we've brought in nineteen. Um, and because our special ed population hovers at that thirty-five to fifty percent in pre-K. It would be very difficult to add three-year-olds into that. Can you imagine if I added eight three-year-olds and nineteen four-year-olds? I wouldn't have pre-K teacher anymore and I would be needing the legal requirements of a least restrictive environment because of all the kids with IEPs. The other problem or way I could fix it, I could partner with the childcare as they could take in our kids. We don't have any childcare in St. George. It's very limited. And it's a very specific skill set you need to have to be able to serve all the needs that we're seeing, which we don't really have those options in St. George. So next year, our plan right now, or it's in the budget as long as it passes. On is that we will have two pre-K classrooms that support those three and four-year-olds. This will prevent us from having nineteen kids in a four-year-old classroom. It will also meet the legal requirements that we're being asked to meet. To serve all of our three-year-olds with IEPs in a least restrictive environment, meaning not over fifty percent of them have IEPs. This is the only way I could figure out how to do it and serve all the three and four-year-olds that have needs. Right now, we have fourteen students registered for pre-K, four-year-olds, and sixteen for the three-year-old program. And we have one early childhood special education teacher and four ed techs that will support kids with IEPs. Um, both their salary and benefits are currently covered, so that's not costing the the town, the district. That's covered by the Department of Education a hundred percent. Um, the DOE, because we signed up to sign on first, we're one of the first schools among maybe ten or twelve others in the state. They sent us all the materials down to stickers and pom-poms to like tables and chairs to completely outfit a classroom. So we also did not have to pay for that. Um, our program will be five days a week for full days, but parents will be able to choose what works best for them. So maybe three, half days for their kid at the start to make sure it's developmentally appropriate. So continue needs, even even after we have three, four-year-olds in school. The tough part about early adoption, as you heard, I started evaluating kids when they're two. That's rolling. So they have rolling involvement, whereas like if you start kindergarten, you have to be five by October fifteenth. So next year, I can still end up with eight unknowns, unexpected three-year-olds and I have to figure out how to fit into programs or. Tell my special ed teacher again, who's duly certified, you're actually going to start pre-K. Um, so that's tough. Uh, we really need to find a way to collaborate with local organizations. I meet with families all the time in an in an effort called Zero to School. Parents are largely saying we need childcare, we need summer program, we need after-school programs. And then if we really want to ensure that all of our children enter kindergarten, healthy, thriving and ready to learn. And as a community, we have got to figure out how to bring childcare to St. George. Cute, right? And so just wanted to add that, everything we're doing, every decision I made, we're really investing in the future of St. George.
So I have a question. If if we did have a childcare. I'm assuming you would push in there and provide services at the childcare instead of having three-year-olds in the school. Is that right?
Well, yeah, it would depend. That would be a great goal to have childcare for two, three, zero to three, whatever you can provide. It depends on who's providing it. How trained they are and if they can support that need. But absolutely, in my dream world, yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just play your comment. Last time didn't go to think they were, but get early intervention. At age three was severe developmental delays, speech, handwriting and all. Uh, it was just critical. This, this works. He's a junior in college, uh, just finishing up the junior engineering college. He's going to be an elementary, uh, school teacher, teaching elementary education. Anyway, but it's so critical, catching it three years old, four years old. It, it really works.
It's so nice. We have the, the school, even though it's mandated, the capabilities to get it done. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, what's, how do people get evaluated? Is it like the pediatrician said, you need to get a thorough evaluation or something like that?
I wish that was happening. I know, it's actually been really interesting. So families who know about CDS or Child Developmental Services or pediatricians can refer. Uh, than to CDS, but now we're going to bypass that whole kind of messy lack of resource system. And we will have them refer directly to us. And then we have all the capability to be able to provide the developmental evaluation, speech, OT. Uh, we even have our speech therapists is probably like one of three in the mid-coast who can evaluate for autism.
So every child's being evaluated or just children that get referred because somebody thinks something needs extra help?
Yeah, children who get referred because they're seen as maybe they need some extra help. But that's why we're also building up the touch point to so many kids and families. Because if you are isolated and your kid is not around other children or you have an only child. You're not really sure if your kid's developing on par or not. Um, and so we're trying to build those relationships to make sure every kid has access if needed.
Just, I think one piece of sad, it just, you know, it's just amazing, um, about the big picture. And I think if you look historically at how this developed, as we've had a, a rapid growth and very high needs. At the, at the youngest stu- students, that's where we see our highest concentrations of, of needs overall and of the greatest needs. So this has been a project that's been underway for five, six years to figure out how to get out ahead of it. Or otherwise we realized it was going to break us. Um, in terms of financially and in terms of being able to meet our needs effectively. So Jess and her team have really done an amazing job figuring out, rather than just reacting to need after it should, after the students arrive at the school. And complaining about how overwhelmed, really trying to figure out how to get out ahead of it. And this year, article two of the special ed budget dropped over three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, which is never happened before. Been a drop before, but never that. So the part of it is we're getting our, our early intervention costs. Hundred percent funded for the three, four-year-olds with special education needs by the DOE. But part of it is just as a reflection of that, you, you have many less kids in the upper grade levels that have those needs. And then when they go on to high school, they don't have to be as an intensive program, so they can have a, a overall, um, a, a positive high school experience. Um, I would also say that part of how we're meeting kids' needs. Is, you know, you've got Stu and you've got Susan, you've got Lurie here and others, probably Dragonheart volunteers. We offer our kids a variety of learning opportunities, working with volunteers, working with, um, part of getting to know local businesses. Um, they go to the apprentice shop, they build boats, but try and provide kids lots of different learning opportunities. We're meeting all the kids to where they're at. Um, I think what is happening with Jess is doing the early intervention, especially the birth. To school, then to three, to, you know, to second grade, you know, probably one of the more unique programs in the state.
Susan?
I'll just add on to my name, Susan Bates for the minutes. Um. Two years ago, I started talking with Mike and then Jess about how to help our education system. And so we start, we. Created this educate, this volunteer program called Dragonheart Volunteers. We all go through background screening, do the privacy. Things so that we can be one-on-one with children. Then we, we're, we're working from pre-K to eighth grade and all sorts of different realms and. Just. We are so fortunate to have Jess and her vision and her work ethic to bring this to us kids. And I was able to see firsthand, I was with pre-K last year with a child who had one-on-one support. They're now fully functioning in kindergarten and it's just, and that's what Jess kept saying earlier, we get them. Sooner they're just part of the classroom and it's really, really exciting.
Yes.
Uh, so my name's Stu Rich. I live over on the Wallston Road. Uh, my kids went to the St. George school. Uh, they're roughly Brandon's age. Uh, was on the school board for SAD fifty back when we were part of, um, Georgia's Valley. Uh, Billy Reinhardt and I tried like hell to save the Grace Institute, um. Because uh, of the great work that Jimmy was doing with kids that learned, uh, with difficulty. I'm now part of Susan's, uh, Dragonheart's program. And, uh, and so I get to be in the school every week, uh, working with some of Jess's kids. And I gotta tell you, the uh, impact. That Jess and her program is having on these kids is. Just truly astounding and such a joy to watch. It's, it's a highlight of my week to go into that school on Fridays. And work with these kids, uh, and that's. Uh, such a testament to the work that Mike's done, the work that Jess has done, the work that Jess McGreevy does every day. We are so blessed to have this school in our community and. It is such a wonderful asset to our community and, uh, I enjoy going in there every time I can. Thanks for the thanks.
I would just say that that goes to the heart of what makes this school what it is, is that it truly is a community school. And we recognized many years ago, like we can't meet the needs of our kids without the community. So we've got many volunteers who. Engage with the school in a variety of capacities that allow us to offer learning opportunities that other small schools really just can't. We really see the peninsula is the campus for our students. And so going off the Stu's point about the Grace Institute. Um, to, with the CT Makerspace Project, we're going to end the project and we're going to have a substantial amount of money left over. And the school board is in the process of re-establishing the Grace Institute. And it will manage, help manage the work of the project and the work in the new building moving forward. So that, so what we sort of lost. Um, and part of the reason I think that led to the withdrawal, create our own district, that'll be coming back. Um, so you can sort of see that full circle. Um, and that's, you know, that's for all of our students regardless of learning style or anything else.
Stand adults.
And there will be adult and working class as well.
I don't want to miss out. All right. Well, thank you. We should move on to the other things on our agenda, but thank you very much, Jess. All right, we have the Monhegan Boat Line liquor license. Oh, sorry.
That was on there. That's a retail license, not an onsite license. And so it is through the state, not through the.
Oh, we don't have to do it. Okay. All right, son. Um. Last week, in the last two weeks, both the resilience committee and TIP committee met and, um, that we have. A nomination of Jason Ludwig, who's a fisherman, who's interested in serving on both. Um, as an, I believe as an alternate for the resilience committee and a regular member on the TIP committee. So I'll nominate him to serve in both those capacities.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's a great addition.
Yeah. All in favor? That's all five of us. We need to sign that we're willing to pay the county. Is that true?
Correct.
All right. One million, five hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Too much.
Is that the third?
Well, it has been the third highest in North County. Behind Camden and Rockport. I thought we were a little below Rockland.
No, we're more than Rockland.
Definitely. Yeah. So anyway. Well, so you all know that, um, we pay property taxes. You, unlike in some states where you get different bills, like one from the school, one from the county, one from the town. Here we just have one bill. And even though we but, we vote on the school budget separately, the conversation we just heard about. Doesn't really apply to this group, to the town. You know, we'll be voting on the school budget, all of us, um, in June, which is a separate process, but. But the town collects all the money. So whether it's going to pay the, for the school. Or the county that we're obligated to pay them or to run all the town services. It all comes from that pot that we collect in taxes. And so for the past year, fifty-two percent of the money we collected. Went to the school. Thirty-seven percent went to do everything in the town, this building, ambulance, fire. Plow the roads, blah, blah, blah. And eleven percent went to the county. And this is the, the county, what we have to pay the county. And the way that gets calculated is by adding up the value of every property in St. George. What the state decided, since we haven't had a revaluation in over ten years. What the state estimates all property values together to be worth. Which is one point four billion dollars. And then this is the eleven percent of that that we have to pay the county.
Yeah. The, the amount that they're charging is based strictly on what they consider the assets here. The property has nothing to do.
Evaluation. Or what they're doing for.
There, there is a small portion. There, there is a small portion of what is in there for things like, uh, dispatch. That's programmed there for emergencies and for nine-one-one, that type of, and that's a portioned according to population. But the rest of it's not. It's just based upon the evaluation that's been set.
And we're higher than Camden and Rock.
No, those are the only two that are higher than us.
But we're, we're valued higher than Rockland, Thomason and the rest of our neighboring towns.
Right. Trust me, it's shocking.
We actually appealed the state on our valuation and they lowered it slightly, um.
In the fall. So this is a little lower than it would have been if we hadn't pushed back. Um, but anyway. So yes, ninety thousand, eight hundred something is for calling nine-one-one. That's what we're paying for that. And the, and then one point four something million is for everything else. And when you ask, what is that? You know, yeah, the sheriff's department, the jail, the probate courts.
Yeah. The percentage we're paying has not varied very much over the last five years. It's still around ten and ten-point-five to eleven percent.
So anyway, we have no choice but to sign this, right? So that we don't have to actually discuss it. All right, um.
Yeah.
So who witnesses this? It says. In, well, anyway, we just sign our names.
You all sign it, yeah. And I'll have.
Somebody.
Does the evaluation. Lowering that sub- foxment evaluation or?
It's tough to say. The, the state uses their own formula to try to keep our valuation accurate. So it shouldn't change much up or down, but which way it will go, it's, it's tough to say.
All right, so then. We need to, tell me what we need to do for, put the school budget vote on a ballot.
Yes, exactly. You all need to call the, the school budget meeting so that folks can vote on this.
All right, since the town runs elections. Um, I move that we put on a ballot for the voters of St. George to consider the school budget.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's all of us. Okay, so now we're solving this. I received an email that I think I sent to, I hope I sent it to you guys. Um, from James McComber at Penquess. They are applying for some congressionally, congressionally directed spending. Um, to promote rural business startups. And they wanted to know if we were willing to submit. Letters in support of this to Angus King and Susan Collins. The St. George Business Alliance, I sent them this and they are going to send a letter. So the question is whether the select board wants to send letters to or not.
I think we should. The question is whether it will be funded is another story.
Any other thoughts?
Like I say, I think there's some more small business here. Push it.
All right. So if you want to authorize me to sign letters like this, I'll get them done. Is that all right? Okay, we'll do that. I also had a request from the gentleman at Spirit of America. They've, they annually ask us if we want to nominate somebody for some kind of award they do and. In the last two years, we've said, um, we recognize people. Internally in the town, like in the annual report and stuff and don't want to participate in that process. Do people have any desire to do anything differently?
No, I mean, I'm all for recognizing volunteers, but I don't want to do it through that organization.
I think we do it well on the local level, so I support not involving ourselves with it.
All right. Well, then I'll send him an email saying, no, thank you. Um, now where am I on this? Okay, so the next meeting we have on the calendar, is that true? Um. Is on April twenty-first, which is, why is that a holiday? Oh, Patriots Day, right? No, not President. I never understand why these New England states have a separate day from the Fourth of July, but they do. So anyway, we're, I take it, are we going to meet that day or not?
I was just putting it to you all. You don't normally meet when we are closed, but you are able to.
Well, the other I figured out today because I was inviting someone to come, speak to us, that. Juneteenth is one of our meetings too. What does that, June? June nineteenth, well, except it's the Monday of that week. It's not the nineteenth. It's like.
The state's recognizing it on Monday.
Recognizing it on Monday, so instead it couldn't come later. So.
I will follow up.
Okay, so do we want to meet on the twenty-first or meet on a different day?
I'm fine. I'm fine to meet on the twenty-first.
I'm, I'm fine.
Cause we have a workshop already on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I say we meet.
Great.
Okay, okay.
And if the aisles is closed, you'll be the only one that has to be here, I guess.
Irene can take that one off.
Well, I'm not deciding your. All right, so we'll still meet on June twenty-first. And the person that I invited to come talk to us is Steve Sullivan. From the main property tax office. And he's going to come talk to us about personal, the personal property tax that the town has to start. Collecting on business equipment. Um, and because there's been some confusion about what gets taxed and how. That happens, he's going to come to our June second meeting. And we will broadcast that widely on the website and whatnot so that people can come and ask questions.
And we're going to avoid discussion on that tonight so that it can be on the agenda. Folks can have enough. Warning, uh, or preparation so that they can, uh, know when to attend. So tonight is just to let folks know that it will be on the June second agenda.
And feel free.
June second?
June second. You're welcome to come back on that night and ask Mr. Sullivan your questions. All right then, I think we're now at the town manager's report, right?
Great. It's a little lengthy tonight. I have some stuff that is not also listed on here as well. Um. Posted roads. Loaded trucks on a posted road without a permit. Uh, they've since been very cooperative and have um. Stopped using the road outside of uh conditions that are not freezing and uh a plan has been put in place, so. Uh, the roads will be evaluated at the end of the week, um hoping that it may be able to be lifted next week, but uh not sure yet.
While you're pausing, you wanna see if. Anyway, that good? Okay, thank you, Van, I'll try not to.
I moved it out of the way.
Was asked to give an update on the Port Clyde General Store as there's been a lot of conversation around town, I'll just preface by. Reminding folks that the Port Clyde General Store is a private business and so I will speak on. Behalf of the town's. Involvement and um not really get into any sort of speculation or rumors Veronica um who was a point of contact for the general store. Uh, says that she's available for questions and folks are encouraged to reach out to her if they'd like to know more that's going on. As of now, they're still planning on rebuilding, they have uh been in contact with Terry around uh. You know, permits and. When construction would need to start and how much would need to be completed to uh retain their permits. And so as a forward, as of now, things are still moving forward, one of the concerns is whether or not the town. Will elevate Cold Storage Road uh. Knowing that if they're planning to raise their store, they were hoping that Cold Storage Road would also be raised. To meet it uh Cold Storage Road and Factory Road were the top priority on our list of roads for our resilience efforts. There's currently an RFP open for the design work of those roads. And so. We are looking at what options may exist for the town, that option, one of those options could include do nothing at all, it may not be feasible to. Um. Invest into those roads because they may be too vulnerable. It may be that they should come up a foot and a half or two feet or three feet, all of that will happen through this design process that is currently. Uh, out for bid. Otherwise, there's. Nothing new to update on um the towns and. I think that the the general store was hoping that. We could give a concrete answer on whether or not we would be willing to raise the road, we had met with them back in November and December. And uh. Had asked for. Specific plans in terms of what their. Raising and elevation would consist of so that we would know what the road would need to be. Uh, and an estimated cost for that section of of road, I've yet to receive those plans, so I can't really move forward. Without them.
No, it's always gonna come down to the source of money for the those project and the idea was originally to look at it a more complete project to be done. So it is very much up in the air.
Good question, so when will there be a decision about whether or not there's gonna be a general store there?
Again, I think that's a question that's best directed for Veronica, all that we know right now is that they're still moving forward with their plans to rebuild. They've not amended any permits or anything like that.
Kevin McDonald, um, two points, one. I will point out that. On the St. George. Uh, Facebook page. Right, there was the the big thing that said there'd be a discussion about this topic at the meeting tonight. I understand what you're saying. You know, um, my time's pretty valuable, I thought this was a topic we were gonna have discussed. Um, so if whoever was responsible for putting that message out like that.
That was not a post that came from.
That was not the town.
Then I would ask that the that the town selectmen also be aware of it, it it was, I'm sure you saw it. Um, and I don't think that it was a good representation. Of that posting and the discussion we just had, but I'm done with it. You don't have to apologize.
Right, but you can just understand the the challenge that we have here because.
I I get it.
Yeah, it's a business, a lot of people.
I'm just saying, there was a posting that said there will be this discussion at the selectman meeting. If if someone on the selectman side saw that and actually said. Gee, it's not on the agenda. You know, cause there was other things about the agenda that was also posted and I didn't see that too. Right, um, so I'm just saying, there were people that. It wasn't just me who made this. Observation, right, so I'm just saying, so enough of that, right, I get I get your point. Right, let me just move on. So. I'm trying to figure out, so if Veronica has come to you and said. And obviously you can't answer for her, so I'm just gonna say that. Um, that. Raising the road. Is a factor in their design plan. And you're not. Able to tell her we're prepared to do it and I get the whole plan because I was at the meeting and I've read read through the plan that. You know, that road, factory road, you know, um, you know, drifting beach road, you know, it's all part of a plan, you wanna work that. There was no way Veronica's gonna get an answer from you about. About the raising that road if it's all tied into an overall thing, you're gonna go out to bid and you're gonna look at the whole thing, she's not gonna hear from you when. And you know, certainly, I I'm gonna throw it out, does you don't need to comment, but at least in a year plus, right?
I I I wouldn't say that that's entirely true, I think that if what they needed raised was. A small section. Uh, specifically in front of the store and we were far enough along in our process that we felt like that work was going to align with our larger plan, even if that plan wasn't complete yet. Uh, that it wouldn't limit uh any future plans from being enacted down there. Then we could potentially move forward with it as a way to try to uh. Help with their own timeline if it aligns with again the town's plans for that.
Yeah, and 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 look, you don't have to take my. That piece of road right there is important to the town, general store or not.
Exactly, that's why it was on our pri- at the top of our priority.
And yes, it clearly is a problem where it dipped down into the general store, so I would. Whomever, however. Look to see that that does not become. Whether or not they move forward and what they move forward with, I wanna make sure that the town is not throwing up roadblocks.
Well, if you look at the minutes from the meeting where she came to talk to us about this in November. We told her what Brandon just said, that it it was possible at least that. These could align, raising the road. And their rebuilding of the store. But that what we needed from her was. How high are you raising the store if you rebuild it? And. They had an engineer that was going to prepare a cost estimate for raising the road right in front of the store in that stretch. And we asked her to provide that to us in November. We have not received any of that.
The town has plenty of incentive to take care of that road, we're about to open. Port Clyde Landing this summer and you know, the public landing, which has been a large investment for the town, so we we want to do the work that we recognize.
That's my point of view, if if that, if from her perspective, that one thing is what she's looking for for the town. We we as a town should be looking to do that. If, you know, regardless of, you know, well, what are we gonna do about drifting beach road and, you know, what are we gonna do about factory road and and so on and so forth, we. You know, commercially and whatever, we need that road fit.
And that's why it's at the top of our priorities.
And that's why there's proposals are due in. Next week or sometime very soon for this engineering. That the town, our process that we had set up independent of the general store, so you know, we told her in November, we're willing to work with you. If you come in and tell us how high are you rebuilding the store, what is your engineer telling you? But if we don't hear from you, we'll be doing our own process, which is what's happening.
Would the, I I understand it's a private business. But it's also part of the strategic. You know, I mean, really, I mean, we need to understand that that that's a very big part of the strategic business plan of the town, the the business. Of the town, is it, given that, is it inappropriate for you to say, we'd like to schedule you for a. Open house to come in with our, what do you need?
I invited her to be here tonight. Because I read the Facebook fifty comments. I invited her to come and present what the status was. And instead. You're hearing just what the town has to say.
Okay, so I get your point, right, that's.
I I don't, that's all I can say, yes, there's a question over here.
No, I I I think you might have just answered, I was just curious if anybody had spoken to her recently um to get an update, because that. The general store is pretty important, um, you know.
But you know, clearly, they, she's, they're having their challenges, we have no control over that. There are a lot of people in town that are deeply invested in them rebuilding and then there are other people that. Don't feel the same way, but we have been willing to work with them. And this is where we are, so I I can't, we can't say anymore.
No, that's.
We're doing what we can about that road. And if they send us information and it works for the town, then we'll, this this group of five people will take it from there. Chris?
Uh, I'm confused, uh, where was the conversation about uh this conversation tonight about Fort Clyde General Store, was it on your agenda?
Yeah, that's what, that's the agenda item that we're on right now.
Okay, what what was the topic on your agenda?
Update.
Update.
Yeah, PCGS update.
Under the town manager's report.
Maybe I shouldn't have used the acronym, that might have.
But that was posted on, you know, in our posted.
And that's because I had, you know, members from the public asking. Asking me, uh, you know, if there was gonna be an update, I prefer to get. Town information out in a public uh channel that doesn't have any sort of barriers to access, so. Instead of me replying to emails individually, I said we will provide an update at the next select board meeting, and that I believe is the post. That you're saw was from uh. You know, a resident in town, not from. The town channels.
So anyway, moving on from. That, um. You you wanna tell people on absentee ballots?
Uh, absentee ballots are available April eleventh. I just wanted that on this group's radar. We'll have a um whole post on the website to inform inform people on what they are voting on. Um. Met with Bill Kelly today about tax acquired property, Bill Kelly is the town's attorney to folks. That are attending, but now, uh, and so we will be listing the. Tax acquired property that has been acquired for more than five years that will be listed for sale this summer, so those letters will be going out. Uh, this week or next to. Previous owners of the property. And they need ninety two notice before the property can be listed, so. About ninety days from now, uh, those properties will be on the market.
Do you have anything else in your report?
I do.
All right.
I warned you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're asked for an update on the fuel leak in Watts Cove, um. DEP came down. Are you not familiar with this?
Oh, you were on Zoom, you might not have been able to hear very well at the last meeting.
It might have been two meetings ago.
It came up in the selfish report.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
They had closed that section.
Salt Pond.
Right.
Wow. And so anyway, DEP was uh onsite and has installed essentially uh some sort of basin that catches and filters and. Tests the water there and they're monitoring the. The leak if there is still one, um. And so it is, it is not really a town issue, um, Terry has some photos of what they installed, but uh. It is not a a town process.
Parcels of property that are going on the market, did you?
I believe it's nine.
And how do you know where those properties are?
How do I know?
Yeah. Like a location or?
Tax law.
Uh, I mean, it's in every annual report in terms of property that's been tax acquired, we're listing the ones that are have been acquired. Essentially from twenty nineteen and earlier. And those will all be listed uh this summer.
And those are town properties or are those?
These are private properties that had uh unpaid property taxes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So then they became owned by the town by failure to pay.
There was a lot of motion moving here, I didn't.
Yeah, but then. These people get one last chance, this ninety days. Otherwise, they go, the oldest ones go on the market.
And where are they listed for sale, are they listed with a Realtor or they?
Yeah, with a with a Realtor, um, we're using uh Karen Riscalla. That was through a bid process, the select board selected her maybe a year ago now. There was maybe more, yeah, there was new legislation legislature that came out around tax acquired property and the dispersing of it, and so. We um. Sort of pressed pause on it for a minute to let some other towns navigate it and um. And so our attorney has worked through a few of. Them now and is a bit more comfortable with the laws surrounding it.
Wasn't they at one point in time offered to a buddy owners first or anything like that?
Not anymore, so new laws that they need to be sold through uh a Realtor and. Uh. That Realtor needs to try to obtain the maximum value for them, the town then collects. What it is owed in back taxes as well as any expenses incurred in selling the property, the rest of the proceeds returned to the owner. And so um there's much more. I mean, it it's a good thing for property owners, this the the way that the laws pass, it's much more cumbersome for towns to now get rid of the property. And so if a property is listed for over a year at that point, then it can go back to a closed bid process the way that properties used to be. Uh, it was. There are new building codes that have been passed and are required for towns over four thousand residents, uh, that does not apply to us. Um, however, towns below four thousand residents. Are welcome to adopt these codes, I met with Terry about it, we currently don't inspect for building codes. Um, and so to add this and to add the new codes would be. Quite a burden for our code enforcement office, one that I would say is already quite burdened, there are. You know, constantly uh new builds in town and so I don't recommend that we take these on, um. I I think that if we did, it would require additional staffing. But I just wanted to share.
Mm-hmm.
My conversation with this. Board.
I read the article in the Bangor Daily News about this and um. Some of the new building code requirements. Include energy efficiency and other things and it. It seemed like maybe it would be a good idea, but um.
I think that the codes are. Good and uh a great idea and if we were properly staffed to take it on or already doing, you know, reg. Regular inspections for building codes, then it would make sense to adopt these.
So that'll just be something we'll think about for the future as far as staffing.
Yeah.
And then lastly, um. For the last couple of months, uh, you've been able to get Zoom information straight from the web. you've been able to get Zoom information straight from the website. You could just click the link and join a meeting. Uh, unfortunately, uh, I was misguided in my optimism that, uh, the era of Zoom bombing, as they say, was behind us and that we had, uh, a couple of meetings, um, interrupted with really vulgar and inappropriate content. And so we are back to requiring reaching out to the town office to get the login information for a Zoom meeting. You know, I was so optimistic and it was a good couple of months, but.
Yeah, it's really unfortunate because it, it was so much easier to just click a link on an agenda that was posted, but then Tammy was at the cemetery committee meeting last week.
It happened at the conservation commission meeting too. It was really.
Terrible.
Just we locked him out quick.
Yeah.
That was all I have.
All right. So we'll move on to committee reports. The planning board?
Planning board last met on March twenty fifth and there was one application for the movement of a building back away from the water and the application was approved. Um, the planning board meeting for tomorrow night has been canceled because there's no pending applications.
Board of appeals.
Nothing's happening.
Harbor committee.
Has not met.
Now, I have a question. There the last time I heard them talk about the meeting that's coming up, they said they were going to have it at the Port Clyde Landing. But it doesn't say that on the website. So I guess we should just, if you would check with Dan Morrison, figure out, cause yeah, make sure we, if it is somewhere other than here, it should say. Yeah, I think that was the reason they talked about that. The budget committee hasn't met since we last met. The cemetery committee meeting. Um, the cemetery committee meeting was very exciting. Um, the committee talked briefly about the um, questions that had come from the chair of the budget committee related to receiving their ten thousand dollars to do repairs and maintenance and things. Their request to be put in the budget this year and also the um, increase in the sextance pay and this, as far as the sextance pay goes, she hasn't had an increase in many, many years and she's going to be starting to do a lot more work related to mapping and a lot of other things that they're going to try to do repairs and things. So she's going to be a lot busier plus they felt she should have an increase after all these years anyway. And the ten thousand dollars, they said that may fluctuate each year, could go down. They're thinking once the initial work, ten thousand dollars worth of work is done, it may go down. But they did mention that where the, um, cemetery is owned by the town, would, should their ten thousand dollars, should they, if it's voted and approved, should that tree work come out of that or should that be something that the town would be responsible for? That is coming. The ten thousand dollars they asked for for maintenance at the cemetery is taxpayer money that would be raised to, to attend to the que, the issues on their list, including taking trees down.
I, I understand your question, Tammy. What they're saying is should have this just followed property maintenance, for example.
That was ongoing, that would be separate of their maintenance budget that they're asking for. But every department has its maintenance of all kinds is included in whatever they get. I told them I throw it out there. Okay. So, no. Well, I mean, I think that the thing to explain to them is that is that every department, you know. Well, she had mentioned that they had been unsafe trees there for quite a few years, so. Well, and I think the reason.
Saying is, what I told the committee is that if there was something that needed immediate attention to still let us know that we could, you know, potentially still send Steve down to, to do some work, even if they didn't have anything, uh, budgeted for it this year.
Before July first, you mean?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I said this months ago, but yes.
And finally, they are continuing the discussion about bringing green burials into town. And they're going to stop by talking to Terry to, you know, as far as setback issues and water and all that stuff. So they're going to stop that process. It'll be a while, but. And they're going to get all the information from the state about what you have to have to be permitted to have those. Right. Okay, a lot of research to do.
Right.
So Brandon, if you would report on the emergency services committee, because although I was on Zoom, I could not hear a thing.
It's, uh, a couple of main focal points are, one is a program that I'm now forgetting title of the community. So it's community, essentially it's doing, uh, preventative work, uh, around the community. So the fire department helping with smoke alarms or and extinguishers and training on how to use them as well as, uh, the community paramedicine program doing things like some first aid awareness or stop the bleed trainings, um, or whatever it may be. And so there, there are a couple of folks that are on those departments that are attending trainings on these programs that exist in other towns and are going to bring back a plan uh, to the chiefs and the, the committee to explore. Uh, and then the other main topic of conversation was exploring the idea of was sort of overall safety in the community, um, specifically focused around traffic and pedestrians. And so there was a lot of conversation about signage, um, but then exploring the idea of whether or not St. George would be interested in pursuing a sheriff's deputy contract. The price of that contract, again, what that gets is forty hours of deputy coverage a week. It costs a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So the general sentiment was that that's, we don't need that much coverage, nor do we want to pay that much. Um, and so the idea of splitting it within, with a, one or two other communities, uh, was proposed. I reached out to Owl's Head and South Thomaston. They put it on their next select board meeting agendas. So I should get an update from them. And I let them know that we have not committed to anything. This is just to sort of explore any interest and then it would still go before voters.
And this is all a follow-up because the sheriff came to their meeting the month before and talked about why we don't see more patrol in town, which is they only have between three and four deputies on duty for all of Knox County at any given time. And those deputies' time is basically consumed by other calls, you know, crimes and you know, please go check on my mother. I haven't heard from her in two days and things like that. And they don't have time to be doing, um, patrolling.
An alternative was to lobby to the county to hire more deputies to increase the, the budget for the, uh, sheriff's department. My response was that considering the large amount that we already paid to the county and knowing that because we have lower crime rates down here in town, it might mean we're paying even more without seeing more in coverage. And so my recommendation was to for us to not pursue that.
Oh, the next one I think is the TIF committee met for the first time. That's, um, tax increment finance is what TIP stands for. We're, um, looking to develop a program that would be presented to the voters. And the committee, um, met with Max Johnstone from the Mid Coast Council of Governments. And, um, so they'll be working on identifying the properties in Port Clyde and Tennant Harbor that they expect will increase in value the most. Because you can capture some money that's being paid by taxpayers without charging them anymore. And then we can spend that money on, um, infrastructure and programs in town. So essentially we can collect money, keep money that would otherwise be going to, for example, the county. Um, and spend it on purposes that are identified by the program. And that will all be going to the voters when it's figured out.
And that probably won't be going before voters until next winter. So
Right.
This committee is in the early stages of uh, establishing what a district could look like, what types of projects could be funded. Once you have some sort of ballpark of revenue that could be captured. And so I just, Steve Rich, who was here tonight, um, has a background in GIS. He just put together a few sort of mock districts that I will share with the committee and they will review it their next.
And there's certainly be public meetings to really discuss this in detail.
Right.
All of the, all of the, um, committee meetings are public, but yeah, there will also be public hearings, um, at least one around it.
And the next meeting of that committee is, um, April twenty eighth at three P M. If anybody wants to watch on Zoom or come. Um, the comprehensive plan committee is working very hard on getting a draft ready for the select board's review. You should watch for that on Friday, April eighteenth. You will get an email to you for you to review and that will give you two weekends. And of course, the week in between to review it before the workshop we're holding on April twenty eighth to go through it with the comprehensive plan committee. Um, so that's where that is. Conservation Commission.
Yeah, well, other than the excitement of being Zumba, which obnoxious, but other than that, it's a great meeting. Um, they did talk about the, the members talked about their involvement with the comprehensive plan and were pleased with their input to it, uh, from their perspective. Uh, there was discussion of the old Old Woods Farm, uh, property and, and establishing a conservation easement on that with the Georges River Land Truck. And that's coming together nicely apparently. And, uh, so that will, you know, spell out what, what can and can't be done there. And basically it'll be protected forever for the public. Um, with, with trails maintained by the conservation commission. It's a really pretty piece of land out there. And, uh, a town-owned land. And the, uh, what else did they talk about? Well, finally they, uh, Stu Rich, who's, who's on that commission, um, updated us on the, uh, eighth graders' plans to build a canoe rack for the marsh, um. Yeah, had hoped and I think still hopes to put it on uh, Jackson Memorial Library property, but the library board is a bit concerned about what kind of liability they'd have if there's a canoe rack on, on their land. So maybe that can be resolved. If not, the, the school property is, is so close that the canoe rack could be on school property. And you carry a canoe over to the water.
The, the library was comfortable with the rack being on their property. They were not comfortable with being the ones to loan out the canoes, for example. So they won't. They don't want to check them out like they would.
Sounds like something that could be resolved.
Yeah, I, I think that Ashley is going to work on soliciting donations for canoes, uh, if anybody has any in town that they're looking to get rid of, um. And I think worst case scenario, we would just have them out there and trust in the good faith of people that they would use them appropriately.
Seems, it seems like a wonderful project and very exciting that an eighth grader is behind it.
So who's covering the liability of these canoes and?
Uh, we are.
Whatever.
We are in the same way that we would for any of our recreation programs.
So they'll just be there. Nobody's going to be monitoring who's taking them and they're wearing proper safety equipment and all that stuff.
Well, our hope is, are again, the original hope is that the library would sign out the paddles and the canoes and, and all of that. And so, um, if they're not willing to do that, then short of a better solution, yeah, we would just have them out there free to use. And if we find that we have to go fish six canoes that were sunk in the marsh, then maybe we'll look at a, a new option. I mean, these are.
Maybe the Parks and Rec Committee can come up with a solution. Well, it just seems like it's something that could be monitored because it's a huge liability. Somebody falls, somebody's kid falls overboard, drowns or God forbid, uh, it could just be bad.
I do, do you think that's an increased liability of somebody falling through the ice apparently?
Yeah, but we don't make the ice. We don't, we're not responsible for that. It's different if you.
We're not making the water here.
Right, but if you give them a canoe. I know, but yeah, like Jane says, we're giving them something to go and possibly fall overboard and.
I, I know. We, we do that countless times around town. We give them trails to hike on that they could break an ankle on. We give them, you know, a tennis court in which they could tear the, their ACL. There's inherent risk anytime. So I, I understand your point. I don't see it as behavior that is riskier than what we already allow in town.
Except I thi, I think if they're just sitting there and any age person could go out, that is different than if we check them out and make sure they have, you know, a life vest and they're over a certain age or supervised or whatever.
Any age person can go on our trails. Any age person can go to the beach. Any person can go to the, the playground that we have set up, like that, that's the piece that I'm saying, like, we already put out plenty of opportunities for folks to hurt themselves. And it, it is a risk that we are comfortable with and covered for.
So there's not a possibility of having like a, a waiver that they have to sign if they're checking out?
Waivers don't work. Waivers are not appropriate for public. Um, either the town or a municipality, they're just, they can be overcome easily.
Well, I think it's something that should be discussed further at the Parks and Rec and with the library and because it would be great if it could happen. And we're not going to solve it sitting here, so.
Well, I'm not sure that, and I don't mean any disrespect, Brian. I'm not sure that the Parks and Rec Committee is going to solve the town's liability issue.
Well, except that if.
They're focused on services and programs. So I think that actually would fall with this group.
But if it were a program, a checkout a canoe program and somebody was the person who was there, just like the library didn't want to be this person. But if we had a program where somebody hands you the life vest and the paddles and the canoe and then you go and you, we've made sure it's somebody old enough to, to do this responsibly, then that's different than just having canoes sitting there or whatever. That's why I'm saying is worth consideration. Do they have volunteers that could do that? Specific hours a week or whatever, you know?
Yeah, I mean, you could, we could make it so that you had to come get a key from Ashley on Thursday, but if you wanted to use it over the weekend or Friday, if you wanted to use it over the weekend, but I think then I would still ask this group to outline some criteria for her. She's supposed to be evaluating what the liability the town's comfortable with, because we don't currently do that if she lends out ice skates and people take them to the marsh and fall through the ice, because we do lend out ice skates.
And, and the, uh, library, just for comparison, um, lends out power tools.
I know. I borrowed a chainsaw and they're worried about it.
Well, I asked them that.
That humorously. I, it's wonderful they do that.
I was thinking that here. They're worried about canoes and they. The chainsaw?
I asked them that and they said for our meeting, they wanted to only focus on canoes and kayaks. Um, but that their advice from their, uh, insurance and their attorney is that they shouldn't be lending out any equipment of any kind.
So they're not doing chainsaws anymore?
That's what I asked and I did not get an answer.
Real quick, from Parks and Rec's perspective, like we talked about this next week, um, would it be covered if we just had signage there? Like if you wanted to leave them open to the public anytime, you can use them if there's signage there that says you have to be a certain age, you have to use proper equipment.
It doesn't, I mean, it, it, it's the same as a waiver.
It doesn't, I mean, it, it, it's the same as a waiver, it really doesn't help you with liability. Especially because you could establish that the town made the choice to leave canoes and kayaks unlocked. Next to a water source. So, I mean, the best thing would be in some ways to have a volunteer. Who would give a key to unlock. The canoes or kayaks, but maintain the paddles and the life vests here. So that somebody had to come here. I know that's a problem, I know what you're gonna say, but.
Providing no, we're providing canoes with no life vests.
Well, no, they'd have to come.
They'd have to come, yeah, yeah, they'd be locked up and they'd have to, I mean.
How it's any different than letting them use the playground equipment at Collins Park?
Well, it may not in terms of um straightforward liability, but perhaps the percentage. Of people who fall in versus percentage of people who are hurt by other means. Might be greater for a water source.
I think it's much greater for playgrounds, actually.
Okay, okay.
I, and I think it's, I know we're over our budget by asking a lawyer for advice, but. I think it would be worth asking him, you know? What if we were to do this? How, how different is it from ice skates or, you know?
How about if you go and ask some of the other towns that possibly do the same thing? You know, what, what are their rules and regulations of lending out vessels to go out on the water? Um, I don't know if anybody else does that, I.
I don't know of any.
I don't know of any other town.
I don't think so.
We're cutting edge down here.
I mean, one of the things that I thought about as you were having this conversation, it feels like it would be. A great um addition to the work that you're talking about, when you talk about um. The things that, oh God.
Ashley.
Ashley was talking about, um. You know, in terms of like the land that you've got or that's going, you know, that may be there for recreational and the scouting and all that. Stuff like that sounds like that could be maybe a source of. A way that people could get access to the kayaks or canoes, so it's just.
And again, one of the things the department has heard is that um more recreation opportunities outside of organized sports. More opportunities that are multi-generational, so not just school age, or not just senior citizens or whatever it may be. And then again, lowered uh barrier to access, I mean, instead of something that only runs from Sundays from two to four. Something that is just available to utilize whenever somebody's schedule allows it, and so this was. Still is an attempt to uh serve some of those needs that are being identified.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I hope that Parks and Rec folks can, can talk about it and. You know, whatever ideas people have, you know, have them locked up, don't have it locked up. What is the volunteer capacity? Come to us with something and we'll figure out. With legal advice, what we're comfortable doing. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, yes.
What do, what do the Select Board members wanna do?
I think we need to have further discussions, I like the idea of having the lawyer weigh in on it, um.
Thought we just had two lawyers weigh in.
But we're not licensed in Maine.
We're not Maine lawyers, yeah.
I, I, I completely agree with Brandon, and I think it's, it's, I know that Jess McGreevy, the principal of the school, is wholeheartedly in favor of this. And I think it's something we. Something that can be tried, and we should, let's let them figure it out before we get too deeply.
Yeah. I would love for it to be figured out, so, all right.
Well, they're building the rack, so I.
All right, moving on from Parks and, but that wasn't even Parks and Rec, that was a Conservation Commission report, shellfish. Oh, sorry.
Would it be possible to use the rack to store your own personal kayak, or have another rack? And store your own.
That's.
Kayaks there and not have to transport them back and forth?
So other towns have racks by public access, I know Rockland does for sure, and I believe Rockport. And residents pay X amount per season to utilize the rack and then you supply their own rocks. Their own locks on them.
See, that, that student could go into business.
Wondering, so another thing to put on the list.
It doesn't necessarily meet the goal of lower barriers, um, you know, that requires it.
People have to own something to. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think we all agree that if, if we could provide some donated kayaks and canoes, that would be fabulous. Um, shellfish committee.
Um, the shellfish committee will be meeting April fif- Tuesday, April fifteenth at five thirty in Warren.
All right, solid waste, finally met, Tammy, what happened?
Solid waste?
Didn't they meet?
They're meeting um, eh, Wednesday, April sixteenth at seven thirty eight A M here at the town office.
Okay, we'll look forward to that, we haven't heard anything from them in a while. Parks and Rec, would you like to report what's happening with your committee?
Our last meeting was almost a hundred percent about baseball, getting ready for the Little League and um approving the coaches that had already applied. Um, right now we're struggling with the Oceanside Little League signup process, but we got through it, I think, and. That we have a, we have a good number of kids signed up, we have, I think eighteen signed up for majors in men, in boys, I don't know about the girls yet. And then another sixteen signed up in the younger kids, so.
Great. Resilience.
Resiliency Committee is still waiting on the um application for the planner uh that we're looking at for. Working on stuff, have prepared a um. Listing that has to be whittled down now in terms of priority of all of the ways we might be working in the future to promote uh. Aspects of resiliency and climate change within the, the town. And part of that is a speakers program that Meg Rasmussen has put together that we're looking to implement and perhaps have. At least one a quarter as we go forward.
So what Van was referring to about the grant, you, you've applied for a grant to help pay. For someone to help draft a climate action plan for our town, and we're waiting to hear.
In, in conjunction with South Thomaston.
Right, we're waiting here if we got the grant, and if we don't get the grant, then Aaron Dent, our Island Institute Fellow and. Others will be, get started on the climate action plan anyway. Um, the Scholarship Committee. Now, I know nothing, I know, I know absolutely nothing.
Yet this year, um.
Who's the chair?
We are, uh, it was Mike Felton, he stepped down, so um, my hope is that Wendy would be willing to nominate. Uh, Jess McGreevy, the principal at St. George School to serve on the committee.
Fine, that sounds like a great idea.
I'll second that, all in favor. Okay.
What the Scholarship Committee does?
There are scholarships available um to students every year, uh, and the town sort of plays. A role in helping to uh take in the applications, review them with the committee, make the decision. Uh, the, the money is in account, accounts that the town holds, and so we are able to provide reports on. What it has earned and then um decide how much can be awarded each year.
Okay, so just like the Lighthouse has a scholarship.
Exactly.
Historical society, the town has a scholarship?
No, these are, the, they're the, the scholarships are the ones you're thinking of.
Okay.
And they all, there's like three of them or something, and Irene.
There's four, uh, and they are all private trusts, and the town just manages.
Person, um, and I was unaware that there was.
Well, you all make your own decisions on recipients. Th- these are for.
Oh.
For uh private trusts that were set up, and the town holds the funds for it, this, this doesn't apply to your scholarship.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we're just basically monitoring the bank accounts of monies that were donated. For scholarships by some individuals.
Okay.
And, and we have one voter, which is Wendy, or is she even a voting member?
She is a liaison.
No, I'm a liaison.
Right, so we don't vote, it's the members of the, the committee that get the applications from students. And review them, and then they will tell the town, write a check to this kid or that kid or whatever, and we'll do it.
And so, do you have any information on, I mean, does that, is that something that gets. Awarded every year, or is it just on an application?
Yeah, every, every spring, and the information is on our website, um, we're currently. Um, updating some of the eligibility criteria, there were um some mistakes in some of them, so we're getting that updated. And then we'll make another post to promote them and make sure that folks know that they are available.
Okay, thank you.
And I think there's a list of those in the town report, right?
So do we have any other regular business? If not, then um I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. Um, after which we'll be going into executive session to consider possible disciplinary action against a town employee. So um, does somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting? All right, so we'll excuse everybody and the Zoom attendees. And staff other than Brandon.